Good evening. We have a form. We'll call the planning board meeting to order. First up for general business is, well, the only one for general business is Mr. Iser.
And I got here early for nothing. Does everybody have the email that I sent to Bill and Jim?
When?
Yesterday.
I did not forward it. I got busy yesterday.
Okay, okay. So, I have a question. I'm been asked to do a survey at 4 Lawrence Plain Road, which is on the corner of Lawrence Plain and Bay Road. It's owned by Becky Chamura, whose husband was David Chamura, who passed away several months ago. So she's trying to...
I enabled screen sharing if you have it.
Um, I don't know how to do that. I don't have it. I've got it on another computer, Bill.
I have it up. Want to give me screen sharing, Bill? I'll try.
Yeah, everybody's enabled screen sharing.
Okay.
So that's on the south side? Or north side?
East side or on the west side?
Yeah, south side of Bay Road, east side of Lawrence Plain. It's a brick house. I think it's brick. It sits up on the hill.
Yeah, with the...
Big barn.
Didn't they abandon a garage driveway or something a few years back?
I don't know. That I can't answer.
But it's got the barn with the blue tarp over it.
Well, the house used to have a blue tarp on it, and maybe the house does. I mean, maybe the barn still does. I don't know.
What is the...
I don't get why I can't screen share. Stuff, it's on my screen, but it doesn't show up.
If you have it open, and then you go to your share screen, it should give you options of which screen, and then you have to pick that one.
Yeah, it's just... It's just not, for some reason, I've got it opened. And when I go to share screen, nothing that's a PDF shows up.
Tell them how to do it, Zeke. You're a pro at this stuff now.
Bill, do you want to do it?
Okay, let me see what I can do here.
Or if you want to forward the email to me, I'm happy to.
Okay, well, let me just take a shot at this. Have to save it to my desktop, I guess.
Okay, Mark, I sent it to you.
All right, and sit down on an old Mac, so I just opened mail, and it may take a few centuries to boot up. I was thinking I was on my work.
Oh, you did it, Bill.
Okay.
Good job. All right. So, my question is this. There is enough frontage, there's enough area to create two lots. I'm running into a situation with the 150-foot square, i.e. the Zagradnik box. If you look, I have a green square, a light blue square, and a magenta square. So the green square would be for the Bay Road lot, and either the magenta or the light blue would be for the Lawrence Plain lot. And my question is, do I have to have the box completely around the house? Or can I keep it outside the house?
Nothing in our bylaw dictates that the house has to be in the 150-foot box. So you go to send, you take your, your purple, I'm gonna call it your purple because I'm not going with your funky magenta things. Anyway, your purple box and extend it, I guess it would be northward, and shrink it a little bit so that it misses the green box on Bay Road. Then you're gonna have a box that's gonna be well over 150 by, it'll be 150 by 150, but it'll have a lot more frontage on Lawrence, because I'm assuming you want to keep it on Lawrence Plain Road. That'll be the full lot, right?
Correct.
Okay, so take that white, white blue line, I think that's what you mean, I'm gonna call it teal, but anyways, the light blue line, and make it so that it doesn't encompass the green line, the green box.
Yeah.
And obviously, keep the purple one the full size.
Yeah.
And then just adapt your line accordingly.
Okay.
It, uh, it almost looks like you could move the light blue north up to the corner and get the blue and the green to not... Looks pretty close.
Right, it'd be close there, yeah.
They're gonna intercept, but nevertheless.
Yeah.
Right, well, yeah.
You meet the definition of the, my, does the rest of the group agree with me?
So, the Zagradnik box would apply to new construction, but if you have a site that has the Zagradnik box, are we, so we're saying the, an existing building doesn't have to be in it? Do we even care if the new building's within the box, as long as you have a box on site, right?
Well, the original, the original intent was when the frontage was 125, then it went to 150 feet, people got very imaginative the way they would construct their lots. So sometimes, you could not even get a house on this particular lot. And people would have to go to the zoning board of appeals in order to appeal for a side yard, backyard, or setbacks. And so, uh, the original intent was, as long as you could get a house on there. And it didn't have to be in the box or not in the box, but it, this seems to have the sufficient frontage, the sufficient area, the setbacks will not be compromised. Am I correct in assuming all of those, Randy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the way I would interpret it, Joe. I mean, they have a box.
Yep.
They have adequate property frontage and everything, and the house isn't inside the box. So what? I don't read any place in the bylaw that has to be. I mean...
As long as you get the house in, it conforms with everything else.
Yeah, exactly. The house is still gonna conform with all of the bylaw.
So tell me again what the purpose of the box is. If you don't have to put the house inside the box, why even have it?
Because, I could show you, I could, I would have to draw you a picture, Mike, but people would put up, uh, a long skinny lot.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay, you'd have 150-foot frontage, you'd go back a few feet. So you have 150-foot frontage, let's say you go back 10 feet, and then they would shrink the box down to 20 feet wide, and go way, way back, and it would have all kinds of weird shapes to it, so you'd have the proper amount of square footage. But go ahead, try and build, build a house inside of a lot that looks like...
So that's to be, that's to be a square?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And a minimum.
And if you have buildable space outside of that square, that's fine. When I say, you're just saying...
Yeah, okay.
The site has to have at least a buildable square.
Correct.
Not that you have to be in it.
Right, and where, where I put the house would have to comply with the setback requirements.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
And that is section 4.3.7 of the bylaw for those who are keeping score.
All right, I think that's all I need, gentlemen.
You know, what was that, 4.3.7?
4.3.7.
Nice.
No, Jim, uh, did Randy, is he dismissed yet?
No, I'm here.
Randy, uh, the, uh, planning board did send some notification to the Board of Selectmen regarding the, the way we're gonna line up our annual town meeting. So just continue the one where it was adjourned because of lack of quorum, or is it gonna be completely, so will the planning board article be put at the end again?
It'll be a whole new meeting, and I know Bill, I believe it was Bill that sent the email requesting that the planning board's articles get put first, and I have no problem with that. I will lobby for that for you guys. Because it's been two meetings now. We don't need it to be three.
And we will have a hot article, um, that can go at the end as well, if the, if the object is to keep people's attention.
We can make something controversial, put it, put it out there.
Yeah, well, that's what, you gotta put something at the beginning and something at the end to keep everybody there.
Yep. Keep them sharp.
All right, well, we'll, we'll have to factor that into next warrant and try to keep it spicy all the way through.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, you guys, welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, um, just as a point of information, Attorney Reedy has requested an extension for the Hadley Garage to one of the meetings in January. So I'm proposing that we put it on the first meeting in January, because the second meeting, I believe, is scheduled for, uh, Mr. Michelson. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, he was continued to that. He can ask for a further continuance if he wants, but, uh...
Yeah, yeah, I'll let Michael, I'll, I'll let Kevin know there's gonna be a Zoom meeting. We don't see any end in sight. And see what he says, and I'll let Attorney Pill know so he can let his clients know.
That'll be January 5th.
That would be correct. Yeah, that'll be the one for Hadley Garage. I'm assuming that probably the same thing may happen with the Gundershine one. If nobody shows up tonight.
So I did send an email to the contractor, but I don't have a reply, and I'm not necessarily expecting one.
Okay.
I will, uh, forward that email from Tom Reedy to Jessica, ask her to print it out, stamp it, and put it in the file.
Oh, you have, he said you were copying too?
Yeah, or you can do it, either way.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'll, I was gonna, I was gonna forward it to Jessica, and I was gonna reply to him and include Jessica, and ask her to stamp it and give Tom a date of the next, of the next meeting for them.
So let me just double check here. Okay. It went out, so, uh, Gundershine, so should I just make a motion to continue Gundershine to, uh, January 5th?
Mike, 1/5, yes.
I would second that.
Okay. Motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, Mr. Comia.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
So, um, yeah, I just came on because I, I sent an email to Jim and Bill regarding some of the next steps with some of the, the next things that the board will be looking at. I, and I take it that the town meeting that you were supposed to have didn't happen, or...
Not, not as far as, it never got to us, yeah.
Um, so I guess those items, there's still some time to refine that definition, or did you come to some sort of conclusion on that?
What, what we're going to do as far as how to define, as far as, we're going to set a value ourselves.
Okay.
What the donation should be based on a lot, a, a, a project. And if a developer could, could definitively prove otherwise, it would be less expensive, we will let him use that number.
Okay. Was that gonna be, um, set in the, the bylaw, or does that language have to come in?
Regulation.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I've got a pretty good feeling of what a wholesale cost is, because I'm putting a decent addition onto my house. And there's no way you're gonna put it, I'm not even putting a kitchen in the addition, I was putting a bed, uh, being a living, a bigger living room, a bathroom, and an office. And a cellar. No fancy anything. I mean, there's definitely no, no kitchen. I don't need another kitchen, nor do I want one. And there's no way you could wholesale put in this, put a build a house for $85 a square foot. I'm, that's it for sure.
Jim, your suggestion, I think, is a good one, because it's gonna be a constantly moving target. And as you can see, in the last six months, the target for lumber was...
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't base anything on the last six months because it'd be out of sight. But I'm basing my price, because I've got, most of my prices were based on things that were ordered before the virus hit, or orders were put in. And it's costing me about, I wanna say about $105 a square foot. Okay, so I mean, I talked to several developers in Western Mass, uh, was it West, on Cadwell, was it Western Mass Builders, Builders Association?
Yep.
In, on Cadwell Drive, and they're all telling me wholesale price would be about $200 a square foot. Well, I think you can do it for a lot less than that, but you can't do it for 85 either for the price that we have. If you build it for 85, you're getting not a lot. And the other thing that I, they made a comment about, the larger the house, typically, the less expensive per square foot. Because when you fit your kitchen in versus living quarters or a living room, it's often spread out over a smaller square foot, because a decent kitchen costs you X. And if you spread it out over a 1,400-square-foot house versus a 3,500-square-foot house, you're gonna come out with drastically different cost of the, of the building on a square foot basis. So...
Okay.
So, those are the ones that'll be at the beginning of the meeting. The ones at the end, I added into the agenda going forward, that, uh, the, uh, the MEMA 2020 model floodplain bylaw, you've seen that, I...
Yes.
And that seems to be something that they want us to adopt. So we have a fairly extensive floodplain bylaw. I'm not sure if that is intended to replace what we have, or do we have to have that in addition to whatever else we want to have?
Um, the, my understanding of this is that the new bylaw, um, if there are pieces missing, then, you know, there should be some amendments, but if the board has gone above and beyond, or the town has gone above and beyond, I wouldn't imagine that, um, any less restriction is something that is appropriate. So I think we just need to ensure that if there's any additional, I think what I learned was some reporting requirements, um, just, just as far as the various committees and, and authorities being informed of certain permits, um, and sign-offs, um, that's what I gathered. But, um, if there's anything missing like that in the bylaw, it's just, it's, I think it's gonna be a small amendment, if anything.
So, uh, we, we still don't have that map. Uh, I know Bill had said Amherst received an updated map of this zoning for the FEMA map, but, uh, none has been supplied to Hadley yet, has it?
Not that I, when I talk to the state, I'm, I'm surprised that Amherst got something. Because my understanding is that all along the Connecticut River, there has been, or a lot of the communities surrounding it, they weren't looking to update because they're still doing a study until end of 2022, 2023. Um, Eastern Mass is getting...
Well, because if, if the, if the floodplain is extended, that's gonna be controversial. You know, I don't remember it flooding, and yes, it does flood, and, and, uh, so it appears that people probably will not even have a chance to respond before the town meeting and meet with some of the officials.
Well, so, I think my, the, I used to serve as the floodplain manager in Florida for a community that I worked in as, when I was a town planner there. And when it came to flood maps, if there was a question about, let's say, the, um, you know, if there was a question about building in, in response to whatever floodplain development bylaw there was or ordinance, that there had to be some map change that was done at FEMA. So it's called, uh, LOMER. I forgot what that acronym stands for, but...
Better of Map Amendment.
Yeah, so, yeah, he, yeah, Randy, Randy knows. Um, and so it's, it's that, and I feel like it, the FEMA process has always been kind of like, this is your map, and you have to interact with it with the bylaw that we're suggesting that the town pass so that it qualifies for flood, you know, the, the National Flood Insurance Program. I think, and I don't know what historically the context has been when the town identified or passed its last zoning bylaw amendment for the floodplain, um, regulations, but, um, my understanding is that because, as, as Bill has suggested, there, there may be some additional restrictions that have been placed within the town, that these amendments probably wouldn't create any big difference, other than there would need to be a future adoption of the FEMA map when that's ready.
So it, it seems to be two distinct topics. One is MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management People, are telling us that we have to have certain language in our floodplain bylaws to satisfy the federal regs. So to that end, I think we're asking Ken to compare its Article 13 of our bylaw to the, the 2020 model, and, uh, find out where we, where we're good and where we're not good. The, the second part, which I have in there as a placeholder, FEMA flood insurance rate map revisions, um, apparently, we will at some point be told that we have to adopt amended FEMA maps. But whether that will make it before Springtown meeting or not, I don't know. I just wanted to leave it in there so we could discuss it.
Well, I, I know that based on, and I think your community is the same, that based on the way the bylaw is written, it reflects or references the FEMA maps, the, um, flood insurance rate maps, um, by number. So if there are amendments to that, I imagine that it, the amendments would be those new numbered maps. I'm, I'm quickly on the, um, the, uh, FEMA website where the firm maps are, the flood insurance rate maps are located. And, um, you're actually, you're right, Joe, in that when I clicked Hadley, it pulled up an, uh, Amherst map. But maybe there's a portion, and I don't quite know the boundaries, um, of where, and I'll share this with, with you all, actually. Maybe I have the ability to share screens, I'm gonna do that. This is what I pulled up as what this was posted this past June. So I, I, my, my geography is not great, so I'm assuming that this panel is where the, the Hadley maps would be.
So if this is... Hadley's 163, 250, 163. If you type in an address in Hadley, you should get Hadley stuff. I don't, I don't know what part of the FEMA website you're at, but if you type in an Hadley address, you'll get the Hadley maps if you're at the right place.
I think that panel would be the southern part of Hadley.
Um... One, one question right on the Amherst-Hadley line is where the football field is, the stadium. That area where one, between 116 and, uh, the football stadium, that, I believe, was flooded in 1938. Not that I was around.
So Ken, if you wanted to try 100, um, Middle Street, that's the Town Hall mailing address. If you wanted to type that in, see what you get.
100 Middle Street.
Well, that was probably the 1938 flood, but there was some compensation being made because of the flood control dams up north. So the 100-year flood would be reduced from the steps of the Town Hall by a couple of feet, I think, or one foot.
So I'm, I'm just gonna, it's been a while since I, I played with these maps. But I'm just gonna show you what I put in when I put that address in, and so...
I mean, certainly, we'd, it's...
That's Hadley.
You'd have to see the paper copy and...
Right, right, and, and the town would have the paper copy in its hands. Um, but with regards to which is the effective map, this is reliant on a 1978 map, which obviously is being updated at the moment. Um, so, you know, when the, the comment that Bill made that the firm, the flood insurance rate maps are being, uh, updated, and my understanding in talking to the floodplain manager from MEMA is that by 2022, that was supposed to be the case. Now, when I, um, pulled up the, this map, um, this is a preliminary map that was dated 2020, 6/24/20. So I'll continue to play around, and if there's any preliminary map, or at least, um, you know, kind of what the town is supposed to be looking at, if, if there are some, you know, changes in the floodplain boundary, um, that's probably gonna be helpful for conversations of the floodplain map.
So, so what does this map tell us that you're, we're looking at?
Well, this map is telling us what the guide is to look at these, these specific panels. So these are all panels? But I was gonna play around, and if there was a, an updated panel, um...
And why do we want to look at those panels?
Because those are the, the panels where the town, where Hadley would be. So that's why I asked earlier, you know, if I were to look at this number, would the Hadley be, you know, in this map?
No, that, that's still in Amherst, Ken.
Okay, so it would be outside.
250, 156 is Amherst.
My question, my question is, what is the significance of those numbers in the town of Amherst? What do all those panels mean?
Those would mean, Michael, if you're in the federal floodplain or the FEMA, uh, that, that in, for anyone, anyone to qualify for, uh, a loan through a federally insured lending institution, which are basically all banks, uh, that would be one. If you're gonna have any federal funding, like putting a sewer or water or something like that in...
But, but this is Amherst, and all those numbers are different, so my question is, I guess, why does Amherst have all these different numbers?
No, they're not gonna be different, the, uh...
So, Joe, hang on, let me, let me help you here. Mike, those are different sections of town. There, there's 10 different maps that show different areas of the town.
Okay, okay, okay. So it has, it has to do with geography and not flood potential?
Just the size of the town. Hadley has two panels.
Okay.
Once you go, once you go into the panel, it will show you what they say are the limits of flooding from...
Okay, okay, okay.
But this is just...
Two controversial things are gonna be if, if some new areas are put into the floodplain that were not there in the old one, that would be one controversy, because people complain. But, and, uh, the other one is the trailer regulation along the floodway. And I think somehow Jenna Stone, uh, was gonna be involved with that, but she is no longer working on, with the Conservation Commission. Is that correct, Bill?
No, she's, we're still working with them.
She still is? Well, she was talking about that, and that's gonna be controversial, because there's a movement... there's a movement afoot in town that people want to expand the ability to put trailers along the Connecticut River in the town of Hadley. And if that comes up against the FEMA regulations that said no trailers are allowed, that's gonna.
It'll be controversial, but uh, if it's what we have to do, we can, we apparently we can allow trailers in the floodplain, but not in the floodway.
Correct.
Of course, everybody wants to be right up against the waterline, but um, that's that's where they're they're gonna have to cut it back and say, and there's gonna have to be enforcement, and Tom Quinnland understands that. And he's, you know, he has a basis for enforcing now because most uh, most of the people out there never went for the special permit in the first place.
Correct.
So uh, we've got some enforcement tools and some enforcement obligations. Um.
But that would be one for Ken to to check, to make sure we have the verification one way or the other.
Right.
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean. We want to compare, because I think we do allow trailers in the floodway under the current bylaw, and if we have to edit that to say only in the floodplain, then so be it, we'll do it. But um, yeah, I'd like to just compare what we have versus what the model is requiring us to have. And um, we'll take it from there. That is a hot-button-up one because they're telling us we have to have that um, done this year or or by the annual town meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll, I mean, I, you know, I wanted to take this time, and it it's great that um, your your public hearings were continued so that we can have this this time to discuss. Um, but I'll, you know, take a look, because I I do have the model bylaw. I don't, Bill, have you shared that or circulated that with the board?
Yes, I think everybody has received that.
Um, but I will use that and and measure against the town zoning um, to see, you know, where where there is discrepancy, if if at all. Um, but I think regarding the map, you know, it it, looking at what I'm what I saw is that the the bylaw still reflects the nineteen seventy-eight um, panels, so Amherst is currently being updated, as I as I shared with you. Um, so we'll see where Hadley is, and um, from that, also see what changes there may be to the flood um, map.
Bill, how many of how many of your closings require that people purchase flood insurance, federal flood insurance?
You have to have federal flood insurance if you're gonna get a mortgage from a federally insured lending institution.
So.
No matter if you're in the floodplain or not?
Yeah, no, about one in one in.
That was my question.
One in ten at at best.
Okay.
And I think that may reflect the fact that um, people are perhaps buying those lots down by the river in cash. They're not mortgaging them. And then they're moving in a uh, an RV that probably costs more than the land did.
And believe it or not, the banks, the local banks don't do the analysis of the floodplain themselves. It's it's uh, pretty much shipped out to a a place in Texas that obviously just goes on the computer and says, yes, you're in, no, you're not. And uh, so. Ken, the reason the reason I'm kind of harping on the the changing of the uh, the parameters of the floodplain is that when Jim and I went to the hearing that they were having at the Jones Library in Amherst, they showed us the maps, and some places it was dramatically expanded.
Mm-hmm.
I I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think to comment to that, that is gonna be the case with with a lot of these map changes. Um, you know, I was part of a process in Florida where the map changed, and, you know, where a development was permitted the year before, it wouldn't be allowed the following year um, based on the map change. Um, because it was near a body of water, so. Yeah, I mean, I think you have to, and the town, again, it's gonna be an enforcement issue, but if the town is aware of um, what tools it has to review development, and the building department is gonna be, you know, really involved with any development that is within a flood um, zone um, that requires, you know, being built higher than the base flood elevation. Um, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, it it may change. Um, I don't know if there are areas of town where you could see this happening. Um, but at the same time, there are ways to amend the map, as I mentioned, and and Randy reminded me of the acronym. But there's a process that you engage with the federal government to change the map for that parcel. Or, you know, and if it means moving the the flood, the whatever, what the map says by ten feet so that your structure is not in that zone, then that's what the map change is gonna be, but you go through that process with the government, the federal government.
Well, well, Ken, the cynic in me uh, says, you know, I'm from the federal government, I'm here to help you. There's no, it's no secret that the FEMA fund is running low or bankrupt. It has to be kind of supplemented by tax dollars. And so what they would like to do is expand the floodplain in many areas, thereby getting more federal flood insurance flowing into the federal coffers in order to bolster their funds. It's a subtle way of kind of a tax increase.
They've raised, they've raised the rates incredibly in the past several years, Joe.
You're right, you're right.
Somebody used to pay eight hundred dollars, now they pay five thousand, so they're getting it however they can.
Yep, you're right. Good point, Randy. Thank you.
Bill, when's the last time your partner North Hadley flooded down down there?
Well, the uh, the reason I I say that is because where my farm is on, you know, Stockbridge and Knightley, there's no question about it that part of it on Stockbridge is in the headwaters of the North Hadley Pond. But the little brook that runs all the way north, uh, that was included in the floodplain, too.
Depending.
The Jones Library.
Depending on the um, on the amount of rainfall or snow melt, the uh, the culverts under Route forty-seven have been full. That's about uh, a probably close to a six to eight-foot rise from average water level. And ours is a factor of the um, of the river backing up.
Yeah.
The brook backs up into the river.
Sure. Yeah.
Yours is a fact of of backing up, Bill, because that 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 brook that runs next to you runs all the way down behind Sarzinski, and Sarzinski filled it in, and so it backs up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that koi pond.
There's 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 been times in the past where you could take a rowboat back of our place. I mean, you you could go spear, I remember the Puerto Ricans from Wally Hibbert would be spearing carp back there.
Mike's got a hydro plant down there.
Yeah.
Noah, how do you build an ark? Like, one twenty-eight cubits, what's a cubit? Oh, Bill Cosby had that one.
Yeah.
So I think there, we also have some problems. There are some swampy areas, and there there uh, did Wally Hibbert start, try to grow watercress or something in there once?
Yeah, right, right. Well, either that or it grew wild, but there was a lot of it. And back of Waschkevitz, there was a lot of it. I remember them picking it and eating it, eating it.
Yep, the uh, so the 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 brook really could do a good, with a good cleaning out to uh, uh, but our, around our house is the only place where it daylights, basically, until it gets way back into the fields.
Yeah.
How do you handle the beavers? That's.
Uh, that's been, hasn't been a problem for a while.
I won't say anything.
So this, so kind of segues into the other thing, that I think one of our open items is um, MS four regulations, and I realize that's still a moving target because the the uh, the basic agreement was modified by that lawsuit that was settled at the end of last year, and the effective dates have all been pushed out, but I believe we have to look at uh, MS four general regulations and MS four subdivision regulations.
Uh, yes, so um, I believe I was copied on an email um, from Patty Gambirani, who is our environmental planner here, and and she worked on the MS four bylaw and regulations um, last year, when we were um, taking a look at that, and the town passed the bylaw, um, as you all know. Um, but we need to adopt some regulations, and I guess my understanding, too, is um, you know, now I, there, now that we have, you know, this kind of lag time where we can focus on other things. I know the board was looking at planning board regulations um, that I think if we can somehow coordinate all of those types of things being passed at the same time, um, we can work towards that. I know that Patty wanted to engage the MS four committee at least one more time um, with uh, the DPW director, um, you know, Jim sat on that as well as uh, Jenna Stone, and um, and there was another member, the building department. Um, just to go over what their last conversation was. I mean, it's been a while since that happened. But um, I think that that can happen concurrently, and I know that um, the accounting for it is is through the the town manager's office, the town administrator's office. So I guess it would be the trying to figure out when Patty can work with the committee. I I think, Jim, you're still agreeable to that happening, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I can, I can talk to Patty and see, you know, if, when she can fit in. I think she imagined like ten, fifteen more hours to um, get the the some of the the regulations um, in addition to addressing the MS four regulations within the subdivision regulations um, and and get those to a point where when when I come in with the, and and the board refines the planning board rules and regulations for all other aspects of of your activities, um, I think we can probably schedule a public hearing for that, um, because it's only needs to be adopted by the planning board. Um, and it doesn't need to go to town meeting for those items. So we can, we can definitely put that in the work plan. Um, knowing also that we do have the um, the um, floodplain that we need to also, you know, navigate in these next couple of months.
Yeah, the uh, the MS four stuff, I believe there is a separate budget item under the under the town administrator, correct? Instead of the planning board budget either.
Right.
Right. So if if I had to choose something to scrimp on, I would uh, I would say the general planning board regulations might be a lower priority than getting the uh, floodplain addressed and the MS four addressed.
Okay, so I I think then what I can do is have Patty reach out so that she can engage the committee at least one more time, come, you know, come to some conclusion with that. Um, and then work with the board to adopt the the regulations. Um, but in the meantime, the work that I'll be doing is is the um, floodplain. Model.
I'm also mindful that with the regulatory change that took away all of the uh, uh, delays in permitting, we are going to have to move into a more active permitting schedule as well.
Do you have, do you have many in the pipeline?
We have two that are pending from before COVID started, and we have just had, we had the one last meeting, we have um, two continuances for the forest, that you probably heard for the forest, right? We have two continuances, and a new public hearing for January. It's January, the first Tuesday in January, we're gonna have three public hearings. My guess is that two of them may not get decided, only one's gonna probably get decided, and then we have another one for the third Tuesday in January. Um, and once people realize that we have to start moving on these, like Bill says, we may get several more coming in. So right now, we've only got about four in the pipeline.
Okay. Um. Okay, I mean, I guess, you know, if if you want to place me on the agenda, I can probably take the next two months, but in the interim, you know, knowing that you have a busy schedule, and maybe meet the first month, uh, first week of February. But in the interim, just share drafts, um, and then I can pop in, because for the time being, we're gonna be virtual for a while. Um, I I guess that's just my, you know, kind of thought regarding that.
Yeah, I don't think we have anything scheduled for two weeks from now, which I realize is a really short turnaround, but uh, that might give you enough time to sort of do an overview and.
Yeah, I mean, I I can do that. I do have some time to to navigate in the next two weeks um, that I could spend time doing that and come on.
Are you working mostly from home, Ken, or you have to go to the office?
Um, I'm mostly working from home. Um, I do go to the office at least. I go, I usually go on Wednesdays, um, and it's not even for the full day. Um, it's usually to do like my financing stuff and and printing and copying. But I'm working from home.
Now, this is a general question to members of the board. I know the uh, Conservation Commission is obviously gonna be interested in the federal floodplain regulations and uh, good, we ask Ken to reach out to Jenna Stone or wait till we get something a little bit more concrete?
Wait, we, let's not put Ken in the in the position that he has to contact other boards. That should be.
Uh, okay, I figured you would say that, but.
That should be, that should be, so we don't get too many hands in a pot. That should, that should be my, the board, the responsibility of this board, namely me, to reach out to other boards and coordinate. Otherwise, Ken's gonna go nuts trying to coordinate. So. Because, I mean, he works for us, the PVPC, I mean, he works for, he worked for the town. But, you know, otherwise, if he starts getting direction from two or three other boards, he's gonna, he could very well be, what's the right direction?
You're right.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Yeah, so I'll have something for you at the end of next Friday, so you can have the weekend to review. I don't know if it's gonna be an entire bylaw, but I think we'll get some context around the.
Yeah, I mean, basically give us an overview of what's right, what's wrong.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Okay.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Bill, I finally got Balunis' file put in your mail, in the mailbox today.
Okay.
Sitting on my counter, oh my gosh, I forgot to put it in there.
So the only other thing I have is uh, let me just make sure I got the right number here. Uh, Colony Estates, Lot number six, requesting a um, uh, release from the uh, from the Covenant.
Well, that's the one on Shattuck Road?
Yeah.
We released a couple last last meeting, correct?
We did.
Okay.
Um, we have released one in anticipation that it would be the one to be purchased, but the purchaser liked the one next to it. So uh, Lot number six, it was, by the way, uh, Colony has been now assigned numbers, and the building inspector said the numbering on the plan was fine, so Lot number six on Colony Drive is six Colony Drive.
Okay.
Doesn't always happen that way, but.
Need a motion to release it?
Yeah, I'm not participating.
Okay, we still have uh, several in Covenant?
Uh, I think there are, let's see, there's one, two, three, this would be the fourth to be released. to be released. And there are eight lots, I believe.
Okay. Okay. Make a motion to release Lot number six, Bill?
Lot number six.
Lot number six on Colony Drive.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes for, yeah. Now, who's gonna sign that, Bill? One of
I will get either, I'll connect either with you or Joe.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I have nothing else. Nothing? Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Meeting is history. Thank you, and thank you, John.